We know if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Councilman Schlack, if you could lead us in the pledge?
It'll be an honor, Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carrera?
Here.
Councilman Dewitt?
Here.
Councilman Slack?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman O'Flan?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Okay. Great. Well, good afternoon, everybody, and we'll start with public comment. If there's members of the public that would like to speak at this time, please come forward.
Mr. Public is here. Rick Steinmeier. I'm glad to see everybody's here. Made it in the rain. There's only puddles when it rains, so don't worry about it. It'll all be gone once it stops raining.
Thank you.
Quality of life. Raising the cost of living in Benita, it doesn't help the quality of life for the people that live in Benita. So, I go, let's leave it there. Okay.
Okay. Other members of the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move along. We'll move on to item four, council input on information to be provided at the July 7th, 2017 budget meeting, including discussion of council's budget, expectations, and priorities. So, where would we like to start? With Ms. Ann Wright?
Yes. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ann. How are you?
Fine. Ann Wright, Finance Director. Do have a PowerPoint for you this afternoon, just to run through a couple of things, mostly with the guidance being sought from council on information that would be helpful for you to receive at July 7th, one month from today, which is our council budget meeting. So, if we can start off with slide number one, the items, actually, slide two. Items that I'd like to discuss include just a briefing on some slight changes to the information being presented in the budget book. And when we reference the budget book, it's the bound book. The notebook that you will receive for the July 7th meeting will include almost 100% of what's in this bound book, as well as some additional information. And so, that's another area that we want to have guidance from you, but we have some recommended reports that we'd like to provide that we think would be helpful. Review reports that would supplement the budget book for the July 7th meeting, obtain from you the guidance on what your preference is when we present the budget for prior years. Would you prefer it to be the original budget as adopted initially, or the amended budget? So, we'll walk through that. The format of the July 7th council meeting, when the budget is discussed. Identification of certain preliminary information that we will have at July 7th. Because of the timing of that meeting, we won't have the final information for certain items, so let you know what's going to be preliminary. But when we present preliminary information to you after July 7th, it becomes the council's budget, and any changes that are proposed by staff would then be approved by council before we would adjust the budget. Council direction on prioritization of certain capital improvement projects, and then review and direction on a listing of items that we've accumulated, that people have contacted, primarily Carl, and mentioned items that they would like to have considered. And then, we also have an email that Councilman O'Flan did send out today that I believe that he would like to discuss as well, in conjunction with all these. So, the next slide goes into a discussion item, number one, the consistency in how certain accounts are being presented in the budget. This is not a major thing, but it's going to be prevalent or pervasive, I guess, throughout the whole budget, because it affects almost every cost center. We have HR fees, which is really the costs that we pay to ADP to process our payroll. Previously, we've distributed that cost through all the cost centers, so it's small amounts through every single department. And this year, we're going to consolidate that cost and show it in the HR department. HR is the department that is responsible for processing, having the payroll processed. So, you'll see that in one total place, and the total's about $18,500. You wouldn't know that from the budget book, because it's spread through all these different cost centers currently. Office supplies is a similar thing, although we have one account in the department that we call non-departmental, which means it's, we have costs in there that aren't unique to any one department, but they just sit there in non-departmental. But we also had office supply expense in a variety of other departments. So, we're consolidating that, and you'll just see it in non-departmental now, unless there is a department that has unique office supplies. And actually, finance is one. We buy 1099 forms. That's unique to finance. No one else in the city buys form 1099 to be used that we need to send out at the end of the year. Postage is similar. We have an account in the non-departmental department for postage, but we also had postage running through some other departments, so we're consolidating that in one place. And that ends up being about $8,500. So, again, the amounts are smaller, but it just made more sense to show them in total for transparency purposes. The next discussion item is the reports that will be provided for the July 7th. So, I already mentioned, you'll be seeing the bulk of the pages that we have in this book, but of course, updated for FY 2018, but also some additional reports, and interested in your input on those. The first report is on slide five, described. It's a cost center department report, and it's just going to show three years' worth of actual information FY 14, 15, and 16, and then the original budget approved by council for FY 17, and then the city manager's budget, and we also refer to that as the budget meeting budget for FY 18, and then the variances. The next slide, slide six, shows a sample of that. You see the various columns, and the original column, which has a heading of parent budget for FY 17. It's the original budget for FY 17, then the city manager's budget meeting budget for FY 18, and then the variance between the FY 17 original budget and the city manager's FY 18 budget.
Yes, one question. Just a matter of interest. I haven't heard this term before, "city manager's budget." Was that something new? Just as a matter of interest. I know we used to call it preliminary budget or something. I'm not saying it is or isn't. I just thought I hadn't heard the term.
I think we've been using that since I've been here.
Oh, we have? Okay. My fault.
That's right.
Next slide, slide seven, is a second report, which is sorted by expense object code. So, that's broken down by the actual expense type, and you can see the different departments that have amounts budgeted in that category. And that has the same information, three years of actual history information, the FY 17 original budget, and the FY 18 city manager's budget. And so, slide eight shows a sample report of that nature. Again, it's seeing all those costs in one place, so you can see all in total what the city is proposing to spend in any one cost category. And the third report is very similar to the first report, only it is provided for the operating expenses and capital outlay to show the same types of information, the three years' actual FY 17 original budget and FY 18 city manager's budget, but it also shows the details that make up the budget amount being requested. So, slide 10 shows that. Here's a sample. And the first account that's shown on this slide is for auditing services, and we have one line item. That is our contract with our external auditors that was a result of an RFP process in 2015, when we locked in multiple, a multiple-year cost on the audit. I just want to point out by the arrows that you'll see the detail kind of in the center of the page, but it's totaling up to the total that falls under the budget meeting FY 18 column. The next item, software maintenance consulting, and that's multiple items you see all summarized there, or detailed there, to get to the total. So, that will provide you an understanding of why is this account this amount in total. The next item to discuss is the presentation of the comparative information provided in the budget. These are pages out of this FY 17 budget book, and wanted guidance from council on what information you would like to see. So, there's three pages, the budget highlights, which is the high level near the front of the book, the general fund expenditure summary, and then the individual cost center pages. And so, slide 12 shows just a portion of that page. It's page 23 in the budget book. And we have been showing amended budget here, and my question to council is, would you prefer to see original budget?
Council?
I just would like to make a couple comments, because in order to answer these questions, I think we have to take a step back and try to, council has to articulate what they're trying to discern from the material that's being presented. So, I think that's the first start. Like, there are many uses for this kind of information, and I think the question between amended budget and original budget, I mean, an obvious thing is, did we stick to our budget? And what process did we go through to go from the original budget to the amended budget? I mean, a lot of the times, these are council decisions that make us do that. So, I think there needs to be a better understanding of how we got from the original budget to the amended budget. And because of the budget calendar, we can't have, we could have a year-to-date expenditure, but we don't have a complete actual for the year, the most current year comparison. So, that's why the discussion about, you know, what do we prefer, the original budget or the amended budget? The amended budget should be closer to the, what will be the actual as we finish out the year. Is that correct?
That's correct. One of the key distinctions in the amended budget, when we're looking at the general fund, and then also particularly, capital improvements fund, is the carryover of capital items. So, that causes a big difference in the total amount of the budget from the original budget to the amended budget, because our charter allows for us to roll over or carry over capital budgets that aren't spent in one year to the next year.
But for most of the accounts, that wouldn't...
That could apply within the general fund for capital outlay accounts.
Right.
And then it does in the capital improvement.
But it wouldn't apply to like personnel or the city management?
No, no.
For the operation, the more operational thing, that wouldn't?
The operating costs would not roll over. They could move within a particular department.
Right.
They could move within line items in that department, or if a director has multiple cost centers under them, they may transfer funds between those cost centers.
And then, also, I think, again, I think an overview question is that I think the council should give direction to management about whether we want to keep the tax rate the same, you know, or what, conceptually, what is a goal that we want to do? It shouldn't, I don't believe, because I think last year, when we went through it, that was the first time for me at the government level, there was a discussion at the end of the process that, you know, should we maintain the tax rate, or should we lower it? I think we need to have a discussion among ourselves whether we want to keep the tax rate the same or not. I think that's an important question to decide. And then, also, there's a lot of, there's been some talk about what's called zero-based budgeting. And I think to get at that, we need to identify what I call essential services, you know, and we have to understand what the level of expenditure is required to do those essential services, and then somehow analyze the remaining activity in a different way, or at least conceptually, different way. So, and I don't see any of these questions would do that. And also, I also would like to know how the budget is impacted by the council priorities. I think in most cases, it would be through the capital account, but, you know, the question we want to ask is, are we making progress, and where is that required? And for the same thing, is if there are any management identified priorities, I think that needs to be identified. And some of these questions, the reports that I think you're suggesting, will allow us to look at longer-term trends, because I think that was, that's really important. And the way I looked at this for the first time, at the last time, is that it was confusing to me, because there were wide differences in expenditures in certain accounts over time, because what we want to do here, I think a prudent would be, is that we don't want to just creep up higher and higher and higher and higher. We want to see if we could maintain some kind of level expenditures. And then, the comparisons between, again, I may be repeating myself, between the amended budget and the original budget, is we can monitor whether we're able to keep within the budget. That's an important thing. And I think that's about it, in general sense, but, so I think unless we get some consensus here on the, from the council, a lot of those questions you ask, I don't think are going to be easy to answer, unless we have a framework for what we're trying to accomplish by these reports, other than to just make you work a little harder, you know?
Right, right. Thank you, Amy. Greg?
I guess I got a little different outlook on the way the budget works. I do have a couple of questions, though, for Ann. When you made the comment about personnel budgets, if you have a overage in personnel, not an overage, what's the word, if you have excess money left over for personnel, that can get carried forward, can't it? What happens to that?
That falls to fund balance.
What do you mean falls? I'm lost.
Well, if we didn't spend it, and if we have, you know, from standpoint of our budget, it doesn't carry forward.
Where's that money go?
Goes to reserve.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It goes somewhere. It doesn't go back. It's carried forward into a reserve account or something.
In the fund balance account.
Okay. But it's carried forward, and it's not lost.
Right, right.
It just helps us offset something else.
It's not allocated to that department.
It's not a, that's what I'm looking for. It's not a designated carry forward. It's an undesigned carry forward.
Right.
Okay. No, I guess I have a little bit different outlook, only for the fact, I guess, because I deal in budgets for the last couple, eight, 10 years now. And I do agree with Amy with the point that we need to set, give you guys some guidance on our, what do we want to do with the millage? Do we want it to remain the same? Do we want it to go lower? As a general rule, I think that's what we should tell you guys today, hey, we'd like to lower it a little bit, or do whatever we need to do. But as far as the cost centers go, I think that's up to the city manager and his department heads to bring us a budget to say, this is what we would like to have, and how do you feel about it as council? You know, I do agree with you with combining the different centers, whether it's the postage and the office supplies. I thought that was kind of redundant last year, to see it in each one of them, when it's coming out of the same office upstairs, when they do it. But as a whole, I mean, listening to a little bit what Amy's saying, I agree with it conceptually, but I think that as the city manager and as the finance department, you guys should go out and come to us. We may give you some direction, like, hey, we're thinking about lowering it, or we want to do X and Y. But to the degree that you come to us with a budget, then it's up to us to look at it and say, you're a little high, or can you sharpen your pencil on this, or we don't find this as being a good capital improvement. I mean, I think the capital improvements may come from us, but as you're, as Amy said in the beginning a little bit, what's the essential cost of doing business here, less the capital improvements? That should be right on you guys, you know, start out the zero-based budget. Obviously, we're not just going to say, hey, City of Benita went up 6%, let's put 6% on every cost center. No. And as far as asking, answering the other questions on the format, you know, three years back, and then projected and actual, and then what, I mean, that's the way I like to see it, and that's the way we've done it in the past. That way, you can see where we came from the last three years, what we're projected to spend out on each cost center, and then what are we looking to budget for the next year? And I'll just use a good example. It's like you said, postage, $8,500. Okay. Are we adding it? Okay. Postage didn't go up this year, we're going to keep it at 85, even though we only spent 67, but we still think that we may have an overage because of whatever's going on. And I think it would be up to, at the budget workshop, for you guys to justify when myself or one of the other councilmen says, all right, so far, you've only spent 6,200, and it's gone to 85. What gives? And I think that's the way I would like to see it. If we have a question, be able to justify what, why it's going up, or why it's staying the same, or, you know, we haven't spent it out.
Greg, when you say, I hear what you're saying at the fire department here, you do actual then projected.
Yeah, the way kind of we do it at the fire department...
What's that, projected?
What we do, the way we do it at my place of business is, because I've been working on it for the last two weeks, is basically, let's use, I'm just trying to think of widgets. So far, we've spent, I've got $10,000 budgeted in widgets. Right. Up to this date, which is seven months into it.
Right.
I've spent $6,500. At that rate, I will spend $12,000 in widgets.
Whatever your best guess is.
Whatever the, well, what they do is they divide it out, and then say, that's where the trend is going.
Right.
And it looks like you're going to do this. Now, if it looks like it's short, then we'll go to that department head and say, all right, you've got, you know, $5,000 left for foam. Are you going to spend that in foam this year? Or in gloves, or whatever? And they'll say, I'm not. So, that's when, as a department head, I'll go back and say, well, then, can we lower your budget from $60,000 to $50,000 for medical supplies?
This is for next year?
This is for next year.
Okay.
This is for the, for the next year. Like, right now, let's say for, for example, at Nicole with Parks and Recs, her whole cost center, $400,000. It looks like she's only going to spend $350,000. And that's when we would question her, or Carl would question her, and say, all right, you're only going to spend $350,000. Do you need the 400 for next year, if she comes in the door with 400? And why?
So, when you're doing that, how does last year's amended, original, whatever factor into it?
It, the year before shows you, I budgeted this, this, and this, and it either stayed the same, or it went down, or it went up. And it just lets you know where we're going to trend this year, like, because one of Amy's questions is, we don't know where we're going to finish this year out with that projection. It helps give us a better idea, and Carl, and Ann, a better idea, and for the department heads, where they should be looking at, especially on nominal things, where it's postage, where it's outside council, whether it's anything else.
If I might add on to this, too. Part of the budget preparation process, in fact, we're going through it right now, is to look at the projections from each department, line item by line item, so we understand, we can calculate and understand where the fund balance might be at the end of the fiscal year, because then that, of course, would impact the beginning fund balance for 17, 18.
Correct.
Yeah.
That was my question. I was kind of confusing.
We're working on it.
Because we use a little bit different terms, fund balance versus undesigned and designated carry forward. That's why, when you said, hey, that doesn't go there, I was kind of like confused, so I apologize.
No worries. Steve?
Carl, I know where he's coming from, I know what he's doing, but I'm okay with the amended budget. I don't see any need for an original budget. The only thing I was wondering about is the advilarium taxes, Greg, that you mentioned. I think it might be a little early, maybe July 7th, we could be looking at that?
Oh, yeah, I agree. I agree. And I think that's going to be, kind of to piggyback on that, if I may, that's going to be up to kind of, right now, staff has what the rough numbers are. We already know what the soft, they call them rough, soft rough, whatever you want to call it, is 6%. They know what they have to work with within those means. So, I don't think any, I'll put it out there, I don't think anybody on council right now wants to raise the millage, so they've got 6% to work with, if they need it.
But that's assuming that we'll keep the tax rate the same. That's why I raised the question. If our staff is devising a budget to stay within that projected 6% increase because of the advilarium, I think if we don't want them to do that, we should tell them before they do all the work. That's, we could still do it on July 7th, but they still have a lot of work to do. So, I don't think there's, we can talk about conceptually, and if it can't be done, it can't be done. But, I mean, I agree with you. I don't think anybody want, does anybody want to raise taxes? We could ask that question, you know?
No.
So, we know we don't want to raise tax. The question is, do we want to maintain it, or try to lower it? Do we strategically want to try to lower it? That's the question. Or do you not, the answer could be, I don't want to make that decision now, you know? I mean, that's, there's nothing wrong with it, but I think strategically, I don't want to raise it. I can easily say that. And until I know what the cash flow strains are on the budget, I'm not 100% sure whether we could, we could still direct them to say, let's try to lower it, you know, 1 mil or something, you know? And then, if they come back and say, it's really impossible to do that, or it's just too hard, and we're going to have to sacrifice all that, then we could change it. We're not committing to that, but...
Yeah. Greg, go ahead.
Well, I agree to an extent, Amy, when I, the reason I say that is because right now, we could tell staff not to go over the millage. We want to hold millage where it is. Now, if we want to lower it, that's going to be, in my opinion, based on mostly the capital improvements, what we want to do for capital improvements, because the essential tasks are the essential tasks. We've got to run the city. Now, if we don't want to add on to X or Y, or we don't want to make road improvements, improvements, not maintenance, improvements on things, then that's where we can lower the millage and lower the budget, is on things like that. So, I think directing the staff today, and I'm not making it into a motion or anything like that, I'm just saying, I think the consensus should be, go forward with what you've got to work with, no higher than where we are now, and where we can change it as council is through maybe tightening their belts on cost centers, but mostly on capital improvements. And I think that's where the arguments are going to come down the road, whether it's a wall on Imperial, or doing something like that.
See, I'm not going, I'm not going to...
The wall, my wall.
I'm going to keep this half of the bench quiet for now, and we're going to move down here. No, we're good. We're good. We'll double back around. Peter?
We're going to pay with solar panels. We're going to pay with solar panels.
Yeah, exactly. Solar panels.
Solar pa, oh, solar panels. Okay.
Well, I had a few things here, and I don't want to hijack Ann's presentation, but I'll focus on this, amended versus requested. And that's why I was really listening intently to what Greg was saying about how they do it in the fire department. My concern, and I set this out in the first bullet point in what I wrote, is that whether it's amended or requested, what we have done in the past, and I'm not saying we shouldn't continue to do it, but I'll tell you what my concerns are about it, and how I think we can help with respect to that. We have budgets that historically have far, far exceeded what the year actually has come in at. So, all you have to do is take a look at last year's budget package for expenses that we were comparing to the prior year, which was still then the amended budget or the requested budget, pick up the CAFR, and look at what it actually came in. And it's not a delta of like 2%, 1%, where, you know, it's a tight budget. It's a massive difference, over a million dollars or more difference, between what we actually come in at and the budget. The budget's much higher. So, now, there's such a thing as prudent budgeting, and I've been through, not municipal budgets like Greg has, but a whole career of budgets, where, you know, there's such a thing as a tight budget, there's a little leeway in it, and, you know, you don't want to make it too tight as to be impractical. But what we've got, not in every department, not in every cost center, but macro is a budget that is way over, way over where we come in at. So, what's the relevance of that? Well, we always make our budget. That's great. All right. But the relevance to me is in the process we're in now. And a great example is, and I put it in this thing of writing, is last year, we had one situation where we were, now we're comparing to the prior year's budget, and we're showing like 40 or 80, whatever, in the many tens of thousands of dollars of increase, decrease, decrease, okay? Well, guess what? When the actual year came in, it wasn't a decrease, it was an increase. So, in my view, we took an awful lot of time and created, and then not that anything's intentional, but by the process, all right, an awful lot of angst among one particular group, who were all worked up about why their budget was slashed, when actually was being increased by 5% as against the actuals. So, that, to me, is something that staff's got to tackle. What I suggest here is, and I don't want to tell you to suggest not to do what you've done in the past, that's really kind of like, not so much my business, as much as to get what I think I need for a proper analysis of where we're going. And I know I can't do a proper, I don't know how anybody could do a proper analysis when you have a budget from the year before at something like $13 million 9, when the actual is $12 million 1. Well, by definition, everything, you're not dealing with real numbers, as it turns out. So, my suggestion is simply to go, and I don't care which one you pick, on amended or requested, I'm more looking at, I'd like to look at the actual that exists, now granted, it's going to be a year off, from the prior year, and a comparison to that actual, in addition to what you're doing, not to replace what you're doing. I think that'll give us a much better anchor to analyze stuff, and by anchor, I mean anchoring real numbers, as opposed to what is, you know, a massively increased, I'm trying to say this politely, budget that, you know, we end up coming in $2 million lower. So, that's my two cents on it. And, um, and by anchor, I mean anchoring real numbers, as opposed to what is, you know, a massively increased, I'm trying to say this politely, uh, budget that, you know, we end up coming in two million dollars lower. So, that's my two cents on it. I don't care which way you go, because I'd like to look at, um, actual numbers from the prior year in addition.
Mike?
When you say prior year, wouldn't that be the actual fiscal, like, on this slide, it'd be the fourteen fifteen? Because that would be the prior year that we have the total numbers for.
Yeah, well, right, so for, for us, we'd have the year end, leaving this aside, for us, right now, in the real world, that we'd have the year ended September thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. We'd have those numbers. And those would be real numbers. Those numbers are in the CAFR. Ann has those numbers. By definition, she's gotta have them.
And that, well, that would be on our, that would be our actual, right?
Right.
In the first column. If, if, if we were
Yes.
at the budget meeting, that's what the actual fiscal year.
But
It would be the fifteen sixteen.
Exactly. But, but what I'm suggesting, Mike, is that the percent increase or decrease also be shown by comparison to that number.
From the previous year, or to what we're?
Absolutely. From the actual real number. Because, because
You mean from the previous real number before that real number, or?
No, no, so I, I'll give you
The, the budget that we're in compared to the previous actual number?
So I'll give you an example. When she comes in with a number for seventeen eighteen, it's going to, it would be a comparison against the year ended September thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
Okay.
A percent comparison.
Okay, so it'd be the requested budget would be compared back to the last actual one we have, not the one that we're in?
Not to replace anything else she's doing. Maybe there's two comparisons.
Well, and, and to this question, the amended or the original, is it possible to have kinda both? Because the amended, I'm sure not everything changed, only certain figures probably did. Is there a way to highlight the ones that changed, and not the ones that didn't? So like, you could have the amended budget there, but say, general fund changed, but special revenue didn't, debt service didn't, but capital projects did. So you'd highlight the two that changed.
Explain what?
And not the other, I don't know if that's possible or not, or if it's, you know?
Yeah, that, that's something we can look at to see what
But I also like Greg's idea where it's projected where we're gonna actually fall on, in it. Because it's one thing to have the amended budget, you know, we changed what we budgeted for it, but, you know, to O'Flynn's, um,
Right.
statement also, where are we gonna actually line up on that budget? Are we gonna be at eighty percent of it at the end of the year, or are we gonna be at a hundred and ten percent of it at the end of the year? So I, I kinda like the projected idea, too, so.
That's, that's why I was intrigued by what Greg does.
No, that's good. And, and last names work well, so Forbes, you're next. Well, he called O'Flynn, so, yeah, yeah, right.
That's better than being called a Pony Express rider. Well, two or three things. One, I had brought up last year, but I, I still think we should be throwing in another out year or two, so you see what's coming up the year after the one we're looking at. You always, because sometimes there's a surprise that's in there, that if you see it when you're looking at all this same time, it may affect your thinking a bit. I agree with what Councilman O'Flynn has said. But I think what he's saying is, show the comparison of how much it's going up or down by the projected current year budget, but also go back to the actual budget of the real one, the, the real expenditure that we really did the pre, the prior one, which would have ended in fifteen, like he said. So I agree with that. Uh, one, one que, well, a couple other thoughts I had. Like, um, this very first slide, where you give this example on capital improvements, where, where did those come from? In particular, what is the Astero viewing tower, or whatever it is, Astero Boulevard?
Fred, who are you addressing that to? Ann, right? Yeah.
I guess it's Ann's chart, so.
Yeah.
On that first page, it's
Capital improvements.
Oh, Astero Boulevard.
Astero Boulevard.
Must mean bay.
Yeah.
Must mean bay.
No, that's for the water tower.
Unless it's in Fort Myers Beach.
That's the water tower.
Right, right.
This is the replacement for the water tower. It is the structure that's proposed, at least has been discussed, with an observation deck.
Is that Hickory Boulevard?
Yeah. Where's that, where's that?
That's Astero Boulevard, north of Hickory.
Oh, it is a little trivia.
Where it turns the corner.
It is a trivia.
Oh, yeah, good to know.
On Big Hickory, on Big Hickory, it's Astero Boulevard.
Didn't think it started until Fort Myers Beach. That's good to know.
No, it's, where it goes straight down towards the beach club, that's Hickory Boulevard. Where it turns is Astero.
Yeah, so when you're heading up, when you're heading up on Hickory Boulevard, and you gotta make that hard left
Yeah.
to go towards the condos?
Yes.
Okay, as soon as that left happens, Astero begins there.
Okay. So Boulevard, Boulevard.
Boulevard.
Island doesn't start till the bridge.
Now we're getting to something exciting in this meeting, Harry.
Well, going on, first of all
Oh, Fred, go ahead, yeah.
I, I agree that we should, with, I think it was Greg's point, and I agree that Amy brought it up, that we need to give you guidance. I think absolutely, I think we ought to base our projected budget on the current tax rate. We can always trim it back
Right.
uh, and all that. Now, some things that I learned, and unfortunately, uh, those that could have benefited were, one of them's out, was out of town, the other one wasn't, to me. But I talked to Senator Pasadena, she was very apologetic that we didn't, that we came up short. She said, and the other one that was there, Ray, kind of agreed, that the best way for us to get money for that quadrant is we gotta get some stuff that's almost shovel-ready. So those, those get, usually get the better pro, now that means we're taking a risk, but I'm just telling you what I learned. So, secondly, I think that we, I still, and we'll talk about it in Carl's report, but like, the next step in that Benita Beach vision, remember I've said I've felt that we kinda have more of a one-dimensional vision at the moment, which tends to be the road, not, not what's going on on both sides. I think we, I think we need to really put a lot of time and effort in that part of the, of the program here, okay? And I, and I'm, I'm, and I think one other thing, I, I mean, is there any possibility that any of us think that there might be some different directions or goals that we would wanna have? Would we want to have, I'm not saying we would do it, but would we want to endorse that some people that are maybe doing this, maybe would be doing more grant writing, or something like that? I think we need, I think we owe it to Carl and everybody that works on the budget, our best thinking on things that are on our mind. And then those that, we have a consensus, doesn't mean it's a seven oh, it might be a four three, or a five two, or six one, or whatever. But I think the more they could get out of us quickly on those things would be good. But I do think that the capital plan is gonna, we, we, in a way, we didn't, weren't able to go as fast as we could have, but we're gonna, we're getting to a point on the quadrant thing where we're gonna have to do some cutting bait or fishing. That's, that's the, yeah. And so that, that's my thought for whatever it's worth.
Counsel, anything else at the moment, or do you wanna let Ann?
How about you? Do we get, would you like to say something?
Well, actually, I, I like what I've heard here. I mean, I, not that we wanna convolute this, these spreadsheets or this budget, but I think they're all good ideas. Does it, does that give you a good sense, or do you, do you have some questions of us, or?
I do have one.
No, I, I appreciate the input, and, um, one of the things I do wanna mention is that we've been working over the last several years with our new financial system, so that we can go away from Excel spreadsheets, which are very time-consuming and not always reliable, particularly when you make changes from one to the other, um, to generate this budget book from our Tyler financial system. So we do have some constraints with that, and one of the constraints would be, for Councilman DeWitt, is that we are dealing with actual numbers and budget numbers. So we are doing projections right now, as Carl had, had mentioned, um, so that I can project where we will be at the end of the year on our fund balance. Um, and we're doing that through spreadsheets, but I, I just have to figure out how I can incorporate that type of information, and maybe some of the summary schedules that we may still do in, in Excel. But, um, and I like what Councilman Gibson had mentioned about using the amended budget, and then highlighting what's buried from the original budget, because that, that would work. Because mostly throughout the departments, the variances are primarily in the fact that we had capital outlay that rolled over. And so we amended the budget to bring those dollars into that current year. And that won't affect our, um, operating accounts, but, so, you, you did give me a good, good feedback on.
Right. Greg, or, or go ahead, Amy, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna comment on these, uh, number six here. I, I don't think we should be prioritizing those three items without looking at it in conjunction to the other capital improvement things that we have, because, you know, I think we have other priorities that might come into the fore. So how can you even decide any of these things? I mean, I, my personal thing is on B, is that, I mean, that was sort of like a, um, a wild idea that, that was thrown out, that, that I think that, should that, uh, well, we expect the water tower to come down on Astero Boulevard, that there might be a better use for it, but whether it should be that one or not, I don't think we ever got into that. But I think the reason why it was brought up is because we are going in the direction of branding the city with some kinds of, uh, um, tower. Isn't that one of the proposals for the ones that the interchange? And then also the concept for the downtown had a tower of some sort in that, too. So I think that, that's sort of like what we're branding our stuff with, and that's why that came up. But, you know, whether we wanna spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars when we have to do the network, if that were the choice, I think it would be a no-brainer, the answer would be no, I'd rather do the network. So I, I don't see how you can even prioritize those without more information, in isolation, in isolation. And I, and just to follow up with what Fred said, you know, maybe there are other sort of, um, creative ideas that we wanna throw away, that we might wanna put on the table, but not really follow up on them at this point.
Would it be okay if I went through what I wanted, would that, or Ann, do you wanna finish, or how do you wanna do? Is that all right?
Greg had something, and then I just let's
I just had a quick, kinda question, comment about what you, you had made the comment, Peter, about the, you know, getting closer to the mark, I think is what you were trying to say. And I, and I'm gonna say this, only because I've been on both sides of those, those things. Sometimes, in my opinion, that's a double-edged sword, and if you make each one of them as close as possible, then they kinda get gun-shy, and they'll either over-budget, or at the end of the year, and I've seen it happen before, hey, you got ten thousand dollars left, go crazy. Go spend it all and everything. So I, I, you know what I mean? I'd rather praise him for saving the money
Right.
and, and help maybe lower the millage for the following year, rather than, you know, telling them, hey, get closer to the mark.
Let me, let me just
That's what I mean, I've heard that, those stories about, yeah, the Navy needs to do it, shoving stuff off the back of the boats.
But let me just give you a macro example, alright? So last year, when we sat here for hours, we went through comparing to up or down versus an amended two thousand and sixteen budget, alright? And the number we were working with on the amended for operating expend, expenditures was thirteen million nine hundred and two. That's what we were comparing to when we were doing our budget, thirteen million nine oh two versus everything we were tackling for hours, okay? The, the actual number looks like it came in at twelve million one, alright? So what I'm getting at is, that's a delta of almost two million dollars.
Right.
So, it obviously raises a question, which is, why bother going, comparing to thirteen or fourteen million dollars when your actual run rate is twelve million dollars? It's, it's not the difference, it's not five dollars difference, it's not five percent difference, see? So that, that's my point on that. And I went back and I looked, the previous year was the same thing.
Right.
So, I'm not into, like, yeah, we're making our budget, that's great. I'm into, that's fabulous. But my question is, the analytical tool, right? So somebody comes in and they say, I'm gonna slash my budget by ten percent from thirteen nine oh two. That sounds great. Well, actually, it may be a, a, a fifteen percent increase from the actual number. Okay, so that's, that's where the sensitivity is. Obviously, what you're talking about, I agree with. Everything with budgets, I mean, you know, how you dock a budget, how you end up at the end, how it relates, those are all tricky things.
Right.
I'm just saying, these are so far off that it makes the comparison, in my mind, it makes the comparison to the prior budget next to worthless, frankly, um, in certain circumstances. That's all.
Okay.
I had some other things, could just, can I go through them? Is that all right, Carl, Ann?
Oh, absolutely, whatever you'd like to do.
I know Ann had prepared things, but just, so, I hand it out, um, I sent this out ahead of time, just so Ann would have the benefit of it, I mean, it did it today, and Carl, but, so, the first one we've talked about, I've talked about enough. The second, I think she is doing, showing trends of an expense growth, I think in one of the things she showed, it was showing by cost centers how expenses were going up, or not going up. The third, I actually grabbed from something Astero has done, alright, and it's a shame it cuts across two pages. But the third is, and I wish staff could take a look at this, there's nothing in the presentation that shows just one page succinctly. The current, what you'd call in private business, P and L, right? You'd have your revenue and your expenses in the current year, and showing where you end up on that. We don't have that anywhere in here, and the reason we don't is, Ann faithfully follows, you know, what you have to do by funds, so some stuff is in, so the debt service fund, the debt's in the back, the, the gas fund, the gas is, that's in the back, that actually has some maintenance stuff, which is really general operations in it, and you have the general fund, et cetera. So, this is an attempt, and I, and I've seen this in Astero's budget book, to just have a very simple one-pager, this is number three, which shows revenue, expenses, debt service, that's for general operations. It shows where we are, basically, with the general fu, I think it's gonna end up with the general fund dollars plus gas, some gas tax money that can be used for general expenses, versus the expenses for operations, and then the debt service, and where we are. It's just a data point to show us. And then the same thing on the capital projects, which obviously is impact fees and some gas tax money. Then we have reserves, then if we had an excess in the general fund, that would go there, too. But it's meant to give a picture of that. And then break out, and then flip the page, the building fund separately, because the building fund stands by itself in a corner. I mean, that, that's like a locked safe, right? I mean, the money that comes in can only be used for very narrow purposes.
That's correct.
We always have a surplus in it, we have a massive reserve that basically we can't use for much of anything, unfortunately. So if that makes sense. Then, the fourth numbered point is something similar to actually what Amy was saying, which is, and I, um, we have these lists of funding requests, um, which are, the kinda karma of them is that they're discretionary, alright? But we have baked into the city manager's budget essential and core expenses, but we frankly also have decisions made about discretionary expenses. So, four is a request to the staff to try to, as best as possible, break out what is discretionary in the so-called city manager's budget, so we can make a better comparison when we're looking at a separate list of funding requests. That's the notion on that, to give us a better analytical tool. Five is simply a statement about the Winter Gardens, that I hope there's a clear explanation. And I know we borrowed the impact fee money into the general fund, and it was a one-year portion, and it was a two-year portion, and, so anyhow, I'm, I'm assuming, to say the least, you're gonna have a clear explanation of that. Parks and Rec's just a simple thing, that on the cost center analysis, it's just historically been broken out into literally twenty items. I don't have a problem with continuing that there, but just have a summary total, so we have that on the page. Then the last point, number seven, is, and I think this can fall out of the chart on number three, is, i- if you're a homeowner and you're doing a budget, you're not, obviously, you're looking to spend every nickel of your revenue every year, hopefully, most people. Uh, you're looking to put some money away. And I'd like to have us start to think a little bit more about, in effect, budgeting for reserve buildup. This is kind of a corollary to what we talked about last year, and it's something that we've heard the fire district does, so that they don't go into debt, uh, to build the new firehouses. So that's just a macro, it's a major point, I guess, but it's a, but it's just a general point, if we can start thinking about building that in. Actually, in effect, I don't think you'd technically call it an expense, but colloquially, it'd be an expense item to build that, those reserves up. I think, my sense is, the way we've kind of dealt with it is, we kind of figure out the budget and what falls out falls out, as opposed to necessarily budgeting out of current income for it. So those are my thoughts.
All right, thank you.
Counsel, anything else in the moment? Okay, Ann?
We can look at slide 13. And I think I've gotten enough feedback on that. But what we may be looking at on this summary page would be to have two years' worth of actual. So we had FY '15 and FY '16, and only one budget, whether it be the original budget or the amended budget. And then do a comparison, calculating, showing a variance from the final FY '16 numbers to the FY '18 budget.
So you're going to drop one of these two, pick one, and then you have an extra column you can work with?
Right. And then page 14, slide 14. This is the detailed cost center pages, and again, these pages are produced or generated directly from our financial system. And right now, we have two columns for budget. We could add two actual columns of information. And then either the amended or the original budget and the requested. And again, we could, we'll have to look at that, because I think right now the system only does a comparison to budget numbers. So we'll have to look to see how we can get that to add a column there.
Fred?
Well, I still think having another out here, and even if you do it by simply using some reasonable assumption on a percentage increase in costs or decrease by cost center, and then the big things like a payment that we're paying on a debt, if that happens to go away, all those things show up, or we're taking on a debt, whatever, I still think there's, I think it would be useful to have it. You don't put a lot of time on it, but you're at least seeing, you're looking a little bit ahead, which is a good thing to do, you know?
So you're proposing, if possible, a column or some comparison to a projected '19 budget?
Yeah, it just, yeah, right.
We will, on the July 7th meeting, we will get a five-year projection.
Okay.
So it goes out five years.
Good, that's great. And then the other question I had is, is there anything we've talked, like, should we have a little more discussion on different ideas we're talking about on capital improvement? Like, do it at the next meeting or even this meeting or what? It just seems to me that that's going to be a big, and I still think that any ideas that any of us might have on things we might propose to counsel on modifying some, something to the way we do things that could impact the budget, be better to do it before the budget's put together than afterward.
I see both sides of it. I was going to say, I see both sides of it. If you take the time to do it and they take the time to put it in the budget, then five of us say, nah. Four of us say, eh eh. Then it's just, I hate to use the word wasted, but now we just wasted staff's time. Whether as, you know, I think if we have a, if it's near and dear to your heart, you'll do a little bit of research and say, all right, let's use your quadrant, let's use the quadrant study. We need to put some more money into that. You'll have a number in your head, and that way, you know, come July 7th, we'll say, hey, we want to put another million dollars into the quadrant, say, after what Kathleen said or after what Ray said, that's what we need to do. And then Ann or Carl will be able to say, either we've got a cut, or we can use this, or put it over there and move things around. I just hate to see each, or seven of us up here, hate for seven of us, all seven of us to go to Carl or Ann with a different project, them take the word, take the time to do it, and then all of them get shot down, or half of them get shot down, because the other one doesn't feel that important.
What would you do about, I hear you, and I kind of agree with you. So would you take a pass on the page where she's asking for input on funding requests now?
Well, I think that...
Well, just do it in the context of the actual presentation?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, because, you know, we spent a lot of time last year looking at a five-year capital improvement. I mean, other than, let's say, the watchtower or the entry pieces, do we really want, can we afford it to take on six other different types of capital improvements?
If we make that high enough, would the fire district come in because they can look for fires?
We've got a five-story tower now that we've got to hide, so.
Can we put a fire watchtower on the fire?
You could spray the water, the water on water.
DOF may be able to...
He called it a watchtower, you know?
Well, we can get DOF to, I mean, Florida Forestry Service, they'll do it.
Oh, all right.
So.
We put the fire department's logo on the side, too.
Get naming rights.
The whole side.
Ann?
Okay, we're on, I guess, slide 15, which is just a sample of what the budget would look like, the budget book would look like for FY '18 with the actual columns filled in there, the two years' actual. And this is showing original compared to requested, but we'll take a look at that. The next slide is slide 16, and we'd like to discuss the little bit about the July 7th budget meeting. It is a special council meeting, so it's a regular meeting designated to discuss the budget. There is formal voting that will take place. And as a result of that, the staff is recommending that we do a setup similar to what we have today, where the council will be at the dais, and that will facilitate the use of the microphone and everyone being able to hear, as well as videotaping. So that's staff's recommendation.
Yeah, no, and I have had an unfortunate change of circumstance with my mother-in-law passing away, so I'll have to be dialing into that meeting.
Okay. Then on the proposed presentation, the budget, the city manager's...
Let me just jump in on that. I actually think, don't feel strongly about it, but I'd like to say this, that when we're sitting there, it's more of a cross of a dialogue, to me. And this, and I actually think that makes sense in this context. Because this should be, I mean, as Carl has said before, and I know he says it at the beginning of every presentation on the budget, this is city council's policy statement, that's what this is. And I really think, this has been good today for me, I appreciate it. And that if, there are certain rote things we have to do, I guess. I mean, go through every page and every $2,000 item, maybe, I don't know, you know? But to me, that rote march should not supplant a real discussion about where we are on priorities. You know, and as Greg has said, if people come in with capital projects, then I actually think face-to-face may make a little more sense on that. It's almost like a workshop voting session, just my two cents.
Yeah. We're fine with whatever council wants to do.
Is that all right?
That's fine, that's fine.
I like it that way.
Face-to-face?
Face-to-face, yeah.
And my voice in the background.
And your voice.
Yeah, right, face to God. Charlie, like Charlie's Angels, right? Face time, there you go.
Yeah, thanks.
You can Skype us.
Skype in, Skype in, yes, Fred?
Well, I would like to say that, you know, what happened last year, we got it, and then we went through it. We scrubbed and scrubbed the capital thing, and then we had another one or two sessions. One was in 118 where we scrubbed the actual operating brick and mortar budget of the city, not the capital thing, and made great strides there. I would like to see us kind of do that this year the same way. Get, work real hard on that capital part, because that's going to be the big money. And the phasing is also important on that. And then go on the brick and mortar of the operating budget as a second path. If you try and do it one day, your eyes are going to glaze over, I think.
Right.
At least mine will.
Okay, Ann?
So would you like us to go ahead and schedule a second meeting that would occur relating to the budget?
Yeah, I think, I guess...
I think you're saying you'd like to start with the more macro...
More the macro, the bigger stuff and the capital stuff, for sure. And then we hit the other, and it may be that we can do that more like we did that meeting in room 118.
Start July 7th.
My only comment or question is, wouldn't it be easier, I don't know if easier would be the right word, more prudent to do it the other way? Let's get the brick and mortars, this is what we need to run the city. And now let's see what we got left over for capital improvement. That's my only question. We go in there and say we want X and Y and Z for capital improvement, and we've got that set, then it may hamstring, you know, parks and recs or the brick and mortar that we need to do. I'm just wondering, I don't know which one we put first, the cart or the horse.
Right.
I like the infrastructure first, then, I hate to use the word money left over. If there is, if there is money left in the budget after that for capital improvement, that's when we can go out for the projects that are near and dear to our hearts and to the city itself.
I like that, but it's also part of, well, can parks and recreation be run better? Can the city manager's office be run better? Can the communications office be run, you know?
And I agree with that.
Maybe better's not the correct word.
And I guess my question...
More efficiently.
And I guess the question, back to that point, point, point...
Counterpoint?
Counterpoint is...
Of subsection two?
Yeah, I guess the question is, okay, at what cost? At the cost of capital improvement? Okay, we're going to tie Carl's hands as the city manager's office to get a water tower for $750,000. That's my question. Are we going to tie their hands and do a project that, that's a project?
Well, it's not, it doesn't come out of the same pot, first of all. A lot of the capital, no, it doesn't. No, it comes out of, it comes out of different, like, the gas tax fund or something like that. There's different funding mechanisms to do a lot of the capital improvements. Some of it is supported by general funds, so it's not exactly a trade-off. And I think part of the reasons why we're having some issues here is because we haven't gone through the process of really identifying essential services. And we can start with the parks, you know? What, how will we devise essential services? We're going to run every one of the 23 parks that we now have at a certain level of quality or levels of service. And what does it take to run it, you know? Or we could say, no, we don't want to have 23 parks, you know, we should have fewer parks, or we should have more parks. I mean, those are the questions that we need to answer. And we could go through every department in that way, and we could talk about communications in the same way, which are really essential to running the city in the way that we want at the quality level that we have now or we want to improve on. And we have to, we have to do that. And I don't, I don't think you can, I don't think it's truly a trade-off of one department against the other, and certainly not capital improvements against the rest of the operational budget. I don't see that at all. There's some trade-off there, because some of the general fund is used for some of these improvements. And, but others, we've already set aside the money to do that.
No, I agree with you, and I think that's why we do what you're saying first.
We have to...
Before the capital improvement.
There are things that, and I hate to say frills, but there has to be in every budget something that is not essential. If it is already that way, then I don't think we'd be happy with the quality of life here in Bonita, you know? I think we have to be having some things that are a little special and a little extra. And we probably want it that way, but let's at least realize what we're doing while we're doing it.
Yeah, I almost feel like, it's hard to make a fair statement on this till we actually see the budget.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Well, and I want to follow on with what Councilmember Corumba said. Clearly, a discussion of essential services, core level, you know, core service, as well as once the services, the minimal level of services that you want, then you've got to deal with, you know, the level of services she indicated. So what, and then basically how much?
Right.
Are going to be questions that have to be answered, and certainly best answered by the council, because that's where staff needs to take direction on where you would like us to go on some of these things.
Yeah.
Because it is a most difficult thing for staff to try to determine what the representatives of the public think are core essential services without knowing what those are. Because then we're just taking, you know, we may have some ideas, but they may not be acceptable to the council. So, you know, we would actually welcome some ideas about that in terms of core level of service. Because I was going to ask this question anyway. In terms of determining that, or at least trying to come up with a budget that answers that question, you know, right now, without knowing whether certain services are considered essential or not, for the purposes of the budget that we're putting together, we are basically assuming that everything that we do right now is essential. And there may be, there may be some line items that could be adjusted downward if we feel that the essential level of service can be accomplished by certain line items, but not others. And so those others would be the ones that we would adjust.
That may be a more sophisticated way of putting the proper issue, yeah.
So, but we would, I mean, again, we would, as soon as possible, we'd love to get some additional direction from council on those types of issues, even high level, that might give us some ideas as to where we need to be looking.
I'd make a comment, one is starting with something that Fred mentioned before, which is, and, you know, it's often talked about, quote-unquote, grant writing. But, you know, if you look at, for example, the sheriff's office, I mean, or even Lee Dot, they have a substantial initiative in those organizations to reaching out for making sure they get as much money as possible that they deserve, that's available from other sources. You know, whether it's federal money or state money or whatever. I think an initiative like that, and it's sometimes been tagged grant writing, but let's call it an initiative for access to outside funding, is something that we should be thinking seriously about. And, you know, in my view, it might mean taking someone at staff who might want to do something like that and repurposing him or her to do that. So that's one idea. The, and there's a few, I'll just, and I know in the interest of time, I'll be short about this, but we should have a longer conversation. It's clear to me that at Lee County and Lee Dot, with their billion-dollar budget and, you know, massive staffing abilities, that when you look at the transportation initiatives that they have, that there's an element, and I say this in the nicest way, of them whose guts gets, right? Because they've got the staff set up to go and look at where things can be gotten. We don't have that, and I wouldn't expect that of a staff. A yeoman effort is made by people like Matt and Arlene with respect to that type of thing. So I do think it's an investment that we should be thinking about seriously. The other general, just in response to your question, the other general idea is shared services. And so, you know, a great example of shared services is the fire district does the maintenance on automobiles and vehicles that other municipalities have. Well, we've got, you know, a crack team in a whole bunch of areas, right? HR, communications, et cetera. Maybe we can share those services with other governments or vice versa. I mean, if you take a look at Astero, I understand that their goal is to have no more long-term than 10 employees there. That's, to me, true government light, all right? Well, maybe we have some ability from a service perspective that we could make available to them that would save them some money and save us some money. But I think, you know, things like that are worth thinking about, just in response to what you're saying for general ideas, Carl.
Right, and I appreciate that. And I would just say, with respect to those particular issues, our challenge is, is that we don't have much capacity in terms of, we don't have anybody sitting around here waiting for something to do. So capacity is an issue for us, and that's why, for example, we've always got to take a look at, all right, so if we're going to repurpose an employee, which we certainly can do, we've done before.
Right.
Okay, what's the cost of that? Is there something else they're doing that really is not as essential today as it used to be?
Exactly, it's a value judgment about the two jobs.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Peter, may I ask you, were you looking for a position for a grant writer?
Well... Well, not, yeah, but in the context of not increasing total staff.
Well, we did, we did, if I remember correctly, we had a grant writer nine years ago, 10 years ago?
Yeah.
And it didn't go anywhere, really.
Yeah, well, that's why I purposely was saying some people call it grant writer. To me, the context is bigger than that, you know. I think if you went to Lee Dot, and as an example, you see, I mean, take the bridge that there's some controversy about, right, out on replacement. I guarantee you that in, in that department, they have people who are reaching out for funding from the state and the federal government. They don't call them grant writers, but they're bringing in millions of dollars. So, I think it's a different, it's basically getting, having the appropriate staffing to get our head more, our institutional head, more in the game of where the money flows are-
Right.
And being able to access those money flows. Now, another example is community policing. Now, we probably should be chatting with our local district, and Mike Scott, about that, but I got to believe there must be federal funds available for community policing. Yeah? Now, do you call that grant writing? I don't know. Grant writing seems to me to kind of, I agree with you, Steve. It sounds like, you know, somebody who's sitting in a room, oh, go apply for this grant. That's, I'm talking about more than that.
Good. And, and I think I'll just jump in here for a second, too, where we are going through this process and this exercise, which is vital, obviously. There again, master of the obvious, I'm good at that. But I also think, just, if you, if you just kind of tweak the way we're thinking about this, yes, we can write a phenomenal budget and pass a phenomenal budget, but if we're not taxing Tallahassee, if we're not taxing Washington, DC to the fullest, we're not, so we're being penny-wise and pound-foolish all at the same time, because we're leaving money on the table that, quite frankly, our taxpayers pay, right? It goes up to Tallahassee, it goes up to DC, they know how to get it, and then we have to beg to get it back. Well, let's not beg, per se, but let's have a sustained effort moving forward, figuring out how to bring it back home. Right? And not trying to take words out of your mouth, but that's exactly how, how we look at it. It's, it's a, I don't want to use the word flawed. It's an interesting process. How's that, that you have to do that? But I think that's how we need to look at it. One person's opinion. Other thoughts? Ann, you want to march on here, or what do you want to do?
Well, if we can get some more input then into the July seventh meeting. So, from a standpoint of the, the order that's presented on slide sixteen, with how we were proposing to present the budget, recognizing that we do need to go through the budget, department by department, and, but I heard some comments about maybe doing the capital projects first, but, and then I heard some other comments back about doing the operating, doing, doing the fun by fun. So, if you can give me a little bit of-
Carl, or Ann, would it be possible, just throwing this out, to, see, the thing that takes a lot of time, that I think cost-benefit will tell you, is not quite there, not that we don't have to do it, is five hours of going through every penny of every department. All right? So, if we have to-
God likes that process, by the way.
So, no, but if we have to do that, we have to do it. But, to me, it would be good upfront if we could have a more general discussion of, all right, let's look at the operating budget, let us look at the capital budget, let's look at what our reserves are, what do we have here, what are our funding requests, what are the funding requests built in, to have something toward that. So, we have kind of a macro by cost centers, but not, you know, literally, how much is being paid for books by the city manager, or by the city council, type of thing. Not that we won't eventually get to that. Would, would that make sense, Carl?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, get it a week or two ahead of time, that way, if you've got questions, instead of looking at it the first time on the seventh.
Well, that-
Well, no, we won't be presenting it on the seventh. You're going to get the document prior to that.
Yeah, but I mean, like, well in, I mean, I don't know how quick.
A week ahead of time.
A week.
What I'm suggesting, Greg, though, is a discussion about the more chunky stuff.
Bigger picture, yeah.
Bigger picture.
And we're good with that.
And some detail.
Because I, because I will tell you that we've already been through these, like, line item by line item. It's not our expectation that you should have to do that. If you want to approach it more from a program or cost center view, and, and just kind of drill down as you feel necessary, that makes all the sense in the world.
Kind of makes sense to me with the other, with the other being available, let's say.
Well, sure.
Yeah, if, yeah, if you look at parks and wreck, and we're going to say, why is it up or down?
Right.
And then we can break out and say, this is why, this is why.
Does that make sense, or?
Well, I agree.
Is anybody okay with that?
Well, yeah.
I am. Fred, go ahead.
Well, I want to see if, I think I understand what Councilmember Flynn is proposing. One of the things that takes a lot of time, that all these departments getting up, you're saying not have them do it, or not spend the kind of time that each one of them is-
Not initially.
Not initially.
Not initially. Maybe we'd end up doing it, but initially, let's have general cost-center discussions and capital discussions, understanding what reserves are in the context of what revenue we have for the year, and what we've got sitting aside. A bigger discussion about that upfront.
Yeah, and it gives us more time to get into it, because those other things take a lot of time.
Now, I'm not saying we wouldn't do the-
Right. No, but it's like you said, Fred, if we're looking at 50 pages of Excel spreadsheets on July seventh, we're not seeing the forest through the trees. We're getting lost in all those numbers.
Yeah, and then their presentation takes up time, too.
Right, right.
Yeah, I like that idea.
All right, so would council, am I hearing that council would prefer to go, because sometime, you know, the city, sometimes, every year, the city manager gets up there. I get up there and I talk about basically the same kind of things, from the same perspective. What I'm hearing is, let's change the perspective, let's start at the macro level, let's do the numbers, because, I mean, you can read my budget message, okay, so, if you want to. So, I don't even need to do an introductory presentation-
Oh, wow.
Because, I mean, I just want to know how far you want to go on this, because we can get right to the, the macro of where we're at by cost centers, and start right into the whole issue of, this seems to be out of whack over here, what's happening over there.
Or there could be more efficiencies here, or maybe spend money there.
Exactly, I like that. I mean-
Exactly. Because we could save a lot of time on presentation-
Yeah.
As long as you're comfortable with the information we provide to you on a macro basis.
I think that would be-
Very comfortable. Amy, you're good with that, too? I was going to say, I got a sense pretty, pretty-
Yeah, and I think if the department heads are there, I mean, have them in the audience.
Oh, no, everyone's going to be here.
That's what I mean. If we've got a question, then we'll ask.
Okay.
Yep. No, I like that.
Try it.
That's, yeah, right, 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 right. No, 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 that's good, because, well, enough said, we've said it. If, if you're just looking at too many numbers, you're looking at, something's going to get lost or missed, unfortunately. Yeah. Okay, we've got nine minutes before city council, so I think I'm going to put a gag order on council. And Ann, not that nine minutes is a long time, but if you'd like to, or are you good?
I'm pretty good.
Okay.
The only thing I want to point out, though, on the July seventh meeting, is that is the time when council does need to vote on what's referred to as a tentative mileage rate. And that means that you are voting on a rate that you are committing that you will not raise it higher than that. And historically, I guess it's generally been that that rate's the current rate. You can go down, you can, you can vote to reduce it, but you really can't vote to reduce it, or to increase it after you do that. And the timing is tied to when the trim notices have to go out. So, we have a deadline to get that tentative mileage rate to, to the property appraiser's office.
Ann, are you all right with the list I went through?
I am, thank you.
All right. And then one other question I have, which is, on the funding request, so, it doesn't, I mean, we haven't seen the budget, because we're still working on it, but-
Right.
We're not implying there's no money in the budget for roads, or new money for that? I mean, that, I assume that's in the budget?
Yes.
For roads, or for other things?
There are capital items in the budget-
There are.
Including maintenance, and, and actually still funds that the council set aside this fiscal year-
Well, it's different, right, yeah.
Okay, is still there, obviously.
Right. But is there new money, for example, on quadrant, or new money for multi-use paths in there, or is it too early? I mean, what?
Well, Ann, you want to address that?
It's, it's been accelerated, because we did have funding that went last year and this fiscal year, and then, if you recall, the CIP, I believe it was two years where there was not any funding. All the funding's been moved forward to, so we will have funding in FY eighteen, FY nineteen for the quadrant plan.
Okay.
So, it looks like that project-
New money, because it's been accelerated over-
Right, right, it's not what's there, it's the money coming in, in those years.
All right, so we'll see it when we see it, yeah.
So, all right, I just want to be clear on this.
Okay.
So, because your question is, is more money-
Yes.
Added to it in this coming fiscal year?
Correct, correct.
So, in other words, if last year the number was three million-
I think it was five, wasn't it?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, if it was five million-
Right.
Did we, have we put an extra million in?
Exactly.
Is that the question?
Right, right, or five million.
And the answer is yes.
All right. And how about our multi-use paths?
I don't know that one off the top of my head.
All right. Well, that's why it needs to be discussed, but, yeah.
Okay.
Just one other comment I'd like to make, which is, we're, I think at some point, we need to have a discussion about what government light is, because it's, to me, become an expression that's almost like a PR expression, we're government light. We do have a large staff, which is a great staff. But, so, I think it's, not today, but at some point, I think we ought to have a discussion about what we really think government light is. Just a thought.
Okay. Council, closing thoughts, parting shots? No?
We're going to have a stretch break.
Yeah, all right, I guess we'll, so, actually, what we'll do then, if, we will go on to public comment now. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Rick, hello?
Hey, good. Rick Steinmeier, there's an item here for a message Senator 360, that costs like $19,000, $20,000, $18,000. Why is this in, in this package? It should be bought tomorrow. Because I come driving in here in the great big puddles and rain and everything else, and it's a speed limit of 40 miles an hour, and people zinging by me. I can't believe how fast they drive. Why is this got to be next year's budget? I mean, you're talking October, you know. Why is something like this not put on the agenda tonight, so we can help save some, I got two different cars ran off the road on Hickory Boulevard, wiped out trees this week, you know, tired of picking up stuff, broken cars and stuff, and broken trees and stuff. Let's see if we can get this on the budget and get it paid for and delivered. Thank you.
Very good point. Thanks, Rick.
Hello, Kathy? Hello, good evening. For the record, Kathy McGrath. As you all know, I'm on the Special Events Committee, and thanks to Laura and her communication staff, we did a, they did a bang-up job putting on the four big events that we do a year, which of course is Celebrate, Star Spangled, River Fest, and Holiday in the Park. We were hoping that our budget will remain the same this year as it was last year, but I just wanted to remind you, we had one more event this year. You had that wonderful Fiesta event. So, we're hoping that you will budget for that, so that we don't have to divide five instead of the four events in the budget we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Mayor, council, John Pano, Benita Springs Downtown Alliance. I just want to speak in, in favor of, of investing more in downtown, how important it is. We've come this far. The downtown area is just looking so beautiful. There's just a little bit more tweaking to do with events and things down there, and I just ask you, and thank you for your support.
Great. Thank you, John. Other members of the public? Okay, seeing none. We're adjourned, and we'll see in three minutes for the regular city council meeting.
Enjoy your-